Is that the dog? Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the July 21st, 2015 Village New Politics Planning Board Meeting. It's 7:06 PM. My name's Maurice Whitehead. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Other members of the planning board here this evening are Rich Stephens without his hat, Mike Zeiler, and John Litten. Liz Harshell is excused this evening. Usually, our attorney is George Rodenhausen. Our secretary is Ryan Burney. Welcome, Ryan.
Welcome, Ryan.
Welcome, Ryan.
Speaker of the unanimous.
We have our planner, Dave Gilmour, out there among the common folk. And our village board liaison, Tom Rocco, is not here this evening. Also, we have our new building inspector, Bryant Arms, here to keep us honest. Thank you very much. The agenda this evening is brief.
Yeah.
Quite sweet. We have one application review for completeness, and that's for our number PB 1501. And it's a site plan application to divide a retail space in 71 Main Street into two retail spaces. Mr. Goldman?
Yes.
He's here. Come on up.
Thank you.
So you've been here once, and I think Rich Miller was here a couple of times.
Yes, right. He's represented me the last meeting. We met with the zoning board of appeals, also my wife and I. We'd like to, you know, we behave. I actually have got tenants for the space. I put up some rented signs and a lot of activities.
Good. Okay. So this evening, George, you have some notes about the application? Could you explain that?
Well, my notes were very similar to Dave Gilmour's notes. And so to sort of combine them. On the parking issue, by the way, I think we're dealing now with the plan is last dated June 21, which is the plan for a single entrance from the street, which has a vestibule inside for the two stores. And that's to comply with the zoning board getting back through us and saying that it had to be a single entrance from the street. In the parking issue, my conclusion was that because this is continued to be a retail space, although it's two stores, it's the same exterior dimensions, and therefore, the required parking hasn't changed from the current use to what is now being proposed. The board could either say that's, in other words, no increased demand for parking, or it could say it's a new arrangement. They want to see a demonstrated parking plan. My sense is that since there's no increased retail space, there's no change and no need to look at parking as an issue. On the side restrictions, I think I had the same recommendation that Dave Gilmour had, which is that there is a 30 square foot limit on the total signage array. And even though each one may be individually in compliance, we need to know the total square footage of signage altogether, two ponies and some of it. And that wasn't on the plan. So it's a, I think it's a recommendation to add that to the final plan.
Yeah, I thought. But Rich Miller sent something like that to me, but I can't see.
He'll be back, I think, Friday.
It should be on the plan.
Right. So that should be added to the plan. There's on Dave, he also recommended that, I think it's a good idea, in fact required, that the uses be specified as retail uses. And since we have to know that they're permitted uses, that what they are be specified. If one's a jewelry shop, one's attached to.
What, one's a jeweler, the other one's a computer?
That should be specified on the plan, so it's clear that that.
The other one is what?
A computer repair store, or you sell used computers.
Not Apple. Not Apple.
Okay, so whatever it is, it's most likely permitted as a retail or professional service or retail service use. But we just need to know that.
Okay, so put that on.
So they were the only two things to add to the plan. I think the total square footage of the signage. And also, I don't think it's on there that the actual height of the letters of the letters on each sign. Because there's some, if you just go by the restrictions that are in the code, and they all are in.
You can get that from the building department.
Two, twenty-five.
This would really be for like the tenants when they make.
If they make their own signs, then they have to get a sign permit from the building department. And that'll be clearly explained. But as far as us approving the plan.
So I see, on the plan itself.
We just need to know that square footage is there. And they can get the letter layout and so on.
I'll relay this to Richard, I guess.
And that was really all I had.
Dave, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think I heard Mr. Goldman say that the two uses are now, the two proposed uses are now known. One would be the computer store.
One would be the computer store on the right, and on the left is a jeweler from, you know, he's moving from, he's in the Village of Ed.
So that's just new information for me. I think Mr. Rodenhausen has spoken to that. If you, I don't think I have anything in particular to add regarding this option one plan, which is the plan before us, called it in that.
And we're looking at A 1.0, correct?
A 1.1.
A 1.1.
A 1.1 is the option one. And the people said it's June 21, and we chose a single door. I might reiterate also.
Wait, wait. It shows a single door.
Single door, and that was that you, I don't think provided a strong.
I don't see a single door.
Single door here. Single door in the middle of the, let's say, building that accesses the two compartments that are being developed in the first floor off the.
Okay, gotcha. Yes, right, okay.
Our architect, Richard, originally, we discussed, you know, leaving the one door there, and then he was coming up with other ideas and wanted to think, you know, it was better, so he presented a two-door option.
Right, but ZDA didn't want that.
Yeah, right, so I'm happy, for me, whatever you guys want.
Okay.
So if you get this as complete tonight, I think there was my recommendation that there's a the variance notation be added on the plan. That seems like something that can be done, and then go. Recently awarded variance. And then it was just my recommendation that this will not listed action for sticker.
Okay.
Can you just repeat? I missed one. I have awnings need to be added, sign footage. No, if they do warnings, right?
If they do warnings, but the sign on the awning should be added.
The lettering.
There's no warning now.
The calculation.
Are you not adding an awning?
It's, we heard if they want.
The old tenant took.
So it's the lettering on the awning.
There was an old falling down awning anyhow, that was there, so.
The square footage of the signs and needs to be added, variance notion added, and there was one other thing.
Yes, and the retail uses have to be specified. Now, I'm confused about the sign. I thought there was a sign on the building itself, right?
There's currently a sign that is above the, there's a sign pole that's up above the first floor and second floor, or to call it, I don't know, parpedision.
It should be like a play pole.
And that comes out, as Mr. Goldman said, vertically from the building. But I believe what's proposed is a reorganization of the signage.
I've seen a couple of versions of it, and I'm confused what's being proposed.
Essentially, what I understand is it's the individual business identification signs.
On this drawing, it looks like it's only on the awning. And there isn't a separate sign.
And what we've got is some of the information may go across on the other plan as well. The other sheet.
So that has to be made whole. On this plan, that is A 1.1, which is the option that you're presenting, and then we will determine its completeness for it this evening. We have to know what the signage for the building's going to be. And on the drawing, it looks like it's just on the awning.
Well, although, right, so he has to make another drawing without an awning, because there's no warning there.
Well, he may be proposing an awning. That's what it looks like.
He's got an awning on here.
Yeah.
There's this sign here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Which is, as I said, identify the individual business.
So you want that, or you don't want that?
It's allowed. You have.
It is allowed, so fine.
Once we're a quick sign for each business, which is really pretty small.
Okay.
But that's.
How far out is it allowed to come?
I'd much rather than not talk about it now and have that be something that you check with the building department.
Great, great, so that doesn't have to be on A 1.
Right, but we have to know what you're proposing for the signs. Right now, there's an awning and there's a separate sign extended from the building. So if that's what you want, then that's fine, and this is good the way it is, I think. Now, the lettering that's on this awning drawing is not good enough for you?
I just don't know what the height of the letters is. There's a limit on height.
George, the signage part of the awning. It'd be like measuring the rectangle.
It says eight-inch letters.
Around the letters, not the size of the letters, right?
Yeah, this.
Size of the letters.
Eight-inch letters at top and max.
So the band is seven inches, so it would be seven inches or less.
Okay, I think seven inches is the limit.
Yeah, seven.
How did that, Rich, did that intensify?
It's a wall sign, because it's the only thing we have, is a vertical sign.
So does this have to be changed to seven inches, or that's?
No, they, well, you can't get seven inches in that. That's one square foot per sign. So that's something, I don't know what that is, four by eight.
Right, he said to max, but yeah. So it'll be smaller, so less than seven inches is what you're saying.
He's got five, five one-foot square signs, or small signs on the big sign. Five, I don't know why, they're only two uses.
There's an upstairs. Maybe he's including that.
That has to do with the upstairs.
Would you prefer that it not include the upstairs?
Well, if there's a sign.
It's up to the board, really.
There's like some offices upstairs, and that might have something to do with the upstairs office.
And they are described on the different sign?
But not now, I mean.
Now, there's a couple of, you know, like there's a yoga studio and hair.
If you have an existing condition planned as part of the set, if you want. And I think that should.
What we're seeing is that every commercial tenant is entitled to have one square foot sign. So where you put it, it's a discussion between you and the planning board as to where you put it. But you're entitled to it.
So if the awning.
And that's not included in the 30 square feet. That's in addition to the 30 square feet.
But the awning counts?
I count the awning as a sign. It's the only sign here at this point.
All right, well, it isn't the only sign on here. There's that up there.
Well, in the 30 square feet, this would be included. That's extra, not part of the 30 square feet.
So that's not part of the 30 square feet.
Yeah, I think you're well under. I'm guessing if this is seven inches by four feet, you're well under 30 square feet. I don't think it's going to be an issue, but we just need to have it on the plan so we know that it's less than 30 square feet. The total.
So total signage has to, not including that? You're talking about the awning?
Or whatever, if you.
If you have a wall sign, you could have a wall sign, or a window sign. You know, you can put a kerminist in the window, put in the window, but that passes as a sign.
Or a sign out from the building.
So the awning, lettering, square footage does not get added to the standalone sign?
The one square foot per tenant is guaranteed. There's no limit on that size other than one square foot per tenant. It's assumed you're not going to have more than maybe four or five tenants. Anything else in the building that's a sign gets added up to 30 square feet or less. So I'm saying the signage on the front of the awning is accounted.
What if we don't have an awning?
Then you can do a different sign.
You can put a sign on the building, or put a sign on the windows.
A lot of buildings are made, you'd have large signs that extend out so you can see them.
Well, that's a sign that.
Right, a hanging sign. If that's their preference, they can.
So I should speak to the tenants?
And the building department.
You know, what I'd like to ask is, was I have Hudson Valley Contractors, you know, like going to be doing the work. Is there any way in the interim that we can do some interior work while all this gets processed?
That would be up to the building department. I know you've been able to do demolition until now.
Yeah, we started certain, like, you got a permit for a certain kind of demolition, but I, you know, when I went into the store today, they bought, cone told me to ask if there's anything, you know, you can do to get, you know, to the next step.
Right, well, we don't grant building permits. That's done by the building department. And before you can get a building permit, I think, we have to have an approved site plan application. And that's got a few more steps before that happens. Tonight, we're going to determine the completeness of this. If we say it's complete, then we will schedule a public hearing, and we will send it to the county for their review. They will almost certainly say no impact, but we have to give them the option of saying what they want. Once we get a public hearing done, well, once we get the county back, then we can have the public hearing. We'll schedule it in advance, assuming a positive. And at the public hearing, assuming that there is nothing else missing or that comes up as a problem, you can walk away with an approved site plan and then go downstairs to the building department the next day.
Well, what do you anticipate, though, because, you know, the tenants are asking, you know, when they can move in? So I told them, well, you know, I thought maybe, I was hoping September 1st, but it sounds.
The gating item here, I think, will be the county. Their next meeting is on Wednesday, August 5th, which is two weeks from today. They need everything in sometime at the beginning of next week. So if we can get it in this week, which we should be able to do, assuming we determine it's complete, we can get it to them tomorrow or the next day, then they should be able to rule on it on August 5th.
Okay, so if I get the information to my architect, then it's possible to be submitted to the county.
Early next.
By early next. You need that for the county?
No.
You think I'm sending this to the county?
Now, there are things that we will have to determine it's complete, subject to things being changed.
I think it's complete.
Okay, but there isn't the ZDA notation.
The things we're talking about is really to be added to the final site plan. I'm just saying it's complete, but I mean, if the things we're talking about are easily added, there's no major defectiveness, no major thing missing, put it that way.
So this could be submitted?
Yes, we think it will, but we'll find out in a little while. Okay, any other points or questions?
Just that there are some kids hanging out, and we've had some of the shops on the block calling us to tell us about it. There's a vestibule.
Okay, well, that's an item for the building.
They told us.
If you're telling us this to expedite things, we're going to.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm sorry, adding.
This isn't me. I don't have these stores. It's other store owners.
Right, but what I'm saying is.
Yeah, contact the police.
Test the police, right. Okay. Any members have any questions or comments about the application?
So we can rule this complete tonight. They can make the changes for the public hearing.
That's what I said.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Zeiler?
No, I'm fine. I just wanted to say hello.
Okay.
I think, I agree with George. I think the way the tenants are constructed, there's no additional parking impact.
Okay. Yes, we couldn't have to vote on that, could we? Parking, yeah, I think it's fine. Okay, so they have a motion to determine that this application is complete.
So moved.
Thank you, and.
Who made the motion?
That's a good question. I'm going to go back to the video. Okay, John Litten moved, and who will second?
I second it.
Thank you, Rich.
And that's, is that a motion for completeness?
Yes.
Or a motion for completeness?
Completeness.
With information.
Completeness, well. Okay, so now we need a motion to refer this to the county and schedule a public hearing.
We want to vote over.
And let me just see what we have, guys. You're going to vote over, I'm sorry, yes, okay.
No one left. We had a motion in the side.
We didn't motion anything.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
You're talking among yourselves, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Now we need a motion to refer this to the county.
So moved.
And schedule a public hearing, and let me get the date. So the county will see this.
Do I send out the letters for a public hearing?
You will speak with.
Because I sent to the zoning board, I sent them.
You will have to do this. You'll speak with Ryan, who will be in tomorrow, right? And he'll give you the packet that you need to move that.
Probably in the clerk's office or wherever, but if he stops downstairs, I can run it.
Okay. Okay, so, let's see, the next, so we'll have to schedule the, a motion to refer this to the county and to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, August 18th.
So moved.
Thank you, Rich. I second. Thank you, Mark. All in favor? Any further discussion?
August 18.
That's what I said.
I'm checking the date myself.
August 18.
Are you not?
Am I not right? Any further further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So you'll speak with Ryan to get the package for the public notice thing that I put. And Ryan, you haven't done a county referral. There are probably examples, there's probably a template on Robyn's computer.
We're going to use your laptop.
It's a.
A personal one, so I'm just trying to make the file base that I have from her. So I can figure that and see if I can find something.
So she has files on her computer that are not on a power computer?
No, I should have access to all of them.
Okay.
Is this a list of all the tenants within so many feet?
Well, you probably already have that.
Already have, yeah.
Right, but we're talking about the referral to the county, which you haven't had to do yet. We have to do that now for this application. So you just, you speak at the thing tomorrow. So Ryan.
I'll help him find the county referral.
Okay. Okay. So I'm just. But that wouldn't have the county as well. Actually, I think Dave will, he's got it.
Yeah, not many that I can pack in.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Can we have some other business? Added to this agenda, which isn't on here, is approval of the draft minutes for the July 7, 2015. Ryan, did you get the markup copy of this?
I did, but it gets a re-pick, so I.
Okay, I can deal with that. Okay, so. Dave, would you like to give an update on the B3 zoning district project?
Sure, I can just print, put away my one page here. So I get forward information to Ms. White for the next level. I went to the.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the B3.
Oh, B3.
You're up.
B3 is next on the list. Okay, so the B3 committee has constituted it, and it has had six meetings to date. It has regular standing meetings on Mondays and Thursdays at 1:00 PM, usually in this room. And the group has a small list of items that it wants to work on, including, as identified by Mr. Zeiler originally, some of the inconsistencies within the code. One of the main items that the group has spent considerable time on is there is a, is a purpose statement at the beginning of the district regulations and zoning ordinance 21213, sub item G. And I'm trying to remember the last time I may have briefed this group. We've had participation at the meetings by, variously by Chairman Whitehead, Members Zeiler and Stephens, and also Ms. Harshell. And so, in the local law, number seven of 2013, which adopted the standards for the B, that changed the standards for the B3 district, there was a statement of legislative intent. However, no such statement of legislative intent, or if we're to call it by analog purpose, made it into the code itself, and that can be very instructive to the user. And so this group has worked through a purpose, and the latest iteration of the purpose of the district was, they're calling it the Neighborhood Business Residential Zoning District, NBR Zoning District. And it, the purposes as proposed to date, and this is from yesterday, the NBR Zoning District, Neighborhood Business Residential Mixed Use, is established to promote development of the neighborhood defined by a mix of residential, retail, service professional, civic and cultural uses which encourages travel by walking, bicycle, and mass transit. Two goals for the district are encourage residential housing on the upper floors of older story, mixed-use buildings, and to foster a positive relationship between residential, retail, and service professional uses while encouraging mass transit and reducing automobile trips and overbuilding of parking facility. So that's what's before the group. There's a discussion of working next on standards in 21213G, 1A123, which were some of the construed as conflicting standards in terms of, was it multi-story? Or did you allow a single story, for example? And then I think there's also been discussion of the group about going through the code also to some extent line by line. And there's, during a. And there's, during the process of this group meeting, there have been discussions also about use matrices, is how I would present it. And there's had, has been discussion about allowed uses. And the way that allowed versus prohibited uses, and including the allowed uses, the tiers of uses between allowed versus special use permit, there's been discussion about how that may be presented. That's my summary of where we're at within the project and process to date.
Anything to add, Michael?
Sounds good.
Okay, great, thank you very much. You ready for your next report on the other zoning changes?
Do you have anything else?
Is that real, or?
No, sure, I guess I'm ready. So I did go to the zoning board on Ms. White's project. And I think that the zoning board's main discussion point was a need for specific standards for registration and requirements for non-resident owner offices, and a non-resident owner-manager of multifamily housing type, type of shelter. And so I did pass that on to Ms. White, I actually gave Ms. White recommendations for advancing the product. And that was in the context of limited hours remaining within the original task budget for the consultant. I do want to point out that, and I sent those comments off to Ms. White at the end of last week. Mr. Zeiler also had comments, I don't think that he said it at this group, but he informed me that he had commentary at probably one of the B3 meetings. And I didn't get to send those to Ms. White today, but I will send those along as well. And I can share them with your group, just so that you're exposed to Mr. Zeiler's comments.
Thanks.
And that's, that's that project, where we're at. Now Ms. White will comment and turn that around.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Okay, and there is a reminder that on next Monday, the 27th, at, what's that building called?
Community-
Town Community Center. Or the Town and RuPaul's Community Center. At 7:00, there will be a continuation of our public hearing for the subdivision on Huguenot Street, the Jewett subdivision. That's July 27th, at 7:00 Town Hall, Town Community Center. Okay, so.
And the status, just to back that up, is no new information at this point, we're going to hearing, and no new information.
Did, did you get a chance to speak with their attorney?
No, but I did, I will do that. I talked to Batty Brooks today, and I will talk to Joe Moriello.
Moriello.
Well, maybe tomorrow afternoon. This week. We'll work that out to some agreeable con, notation, notation had to do with the conservation easements and so on. I want to make sure that's clear.
Thanks, George. One other thing I'd like to add to the B3 subject is that I've asked George to be able to attend next Monday's meeting with that group, in the hope that we can make significant progress on Thursday towards completing the three items, A, B, and C, is it, or 1, 2, and 3?
2, 3.
Oh, it's, I, I, I-
I, 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 I.
Yeah, I, I, I.
Yeah, thank you. And I'd like to go beyond that, I was hoping that we'd also be able to get into the permitted and prohibited uses, and perhaps special uses, but I'm gonna try to get that done for, for then also, maybe we can have some time discussing that at the meeting. So the hope is that we'll get far enough along that we can get George's input to what we've done so far, and he'll sit through it and help us make good progress answering questions that we may have that... Because time is a wasting, or I should say, time is passing. Tempest is huge again, and we need to, we need to be done soon, so.
26.
That's that. It is Monday, the, so, the 27th.
At what time?
1:00.
1:00.
Here. You withdraw? You're drawing your, I have a objection. Okay, so, we're left with something that's not on here, which is- There are two things on here, now that I see it, so, one is the draft minutes, and the other is the note that George sent around for the proposed modifications to the site plan review standards to incorporate a more relevant set of requirements, more relevant to residential uses than what is in the current site plan, which now is completely based on commercial uses. And when the village added residential uses to site plan review for us, they didn't do anything with that, so we're doing that now. We're gonna, we're gonna look at this quickly, George can explain some of the items, and we'll make, what I'd like to do before this meeting is over is make a recommendation to the village board, who meets tomorrow night, that we would like this to be added to the code or something.
So do you want this, if we do get it done tonight, to go up to the village board for tomorrow?
Yeah.
Well, the first paragraph changed.
Oh, no, I, I have one, one question and or concern, which is that we did ma, I, I think some of these changes that you've gotten read were already made.
That's what I was gonna say, right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, the first, just, just the first paragraph, that change-
Right.
Was proposed, and I think from the minutes that was taken up.
So the, you've got a five-page document from Attorney Rockland in the house, and it's not dated, and I think it came across on the 16th. There's a, the site plan standard, essentially a 50% standard, that is at village board. It's a public hearing tomorrow evening.
And it's the first public hearing, first reading?
I should know that, I have an agenda, and I'll fill that out right now.
No, no, it's okay, it's irrelevant. But I, I just mean to say that we don't have to discuss this any further, because we've already approved the first part, this reading and the first paragraph.
Correct.
So we're up to item A, application procedure for site plan review, sorry.
I miss, I misspoke. So it's not a perfect hearing, and I'll just check on that, but I believe it has not yet been approved by the village board, and it's in the process of being referred to county. It must be the status, and I'll look at the-
Okay. Okay, fine, thanks.
Well, for what it's worth, on the second page of the minutes of the meeting on July 8th, which is now ways back, that proposed local law within section 21223 relating to site plan for review of one and two family houses. I thought that described this first paragraph change. It was up for public hearing, trustee Rockland moved to close the public hearing, it carried, and then that was the end of the discussion of the public hearing. So I assume the public hearing is over. But I didn't see any action on it.
Yeah, my, it sticks in my mind that it was not completed, and that's why it wasn't completed. And it wasn't, it wasn't just that it had been sent to state, and I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Okay, so it's out there, hanging out there.
So, but the point is, we didn't have to deal with that this evening.
And so, as you said, that first standard is currently in.
Okay, George, you can-
So, basically I was trying to add to this section, a separate section for the elements of an application that required for single or two-family homes. And in the course of that, I couldn't resist trying to clean up a little bit some of the requirements for other applications. And so, first of all, I have added in on the generally for applications, a survey of the lot showing the boundaries of the lot, location of existing watercourses, et cetera, clearly establishing that you get a lot survey, so that we're working from something a little more accurate than our tax map. That's something to discuss. I took out some excess for RVH in that first A section, tried to streamline a little bit and collect it in other areas. Showing the size of proposed driveways, and or streets, proposed building structures in use, that should be obvious. I added in, part in secure storage areas for bicycles, which has not been a part of the site plan to this date. And architectural drawings for all proposed buildings. So that, that's a change in the, oh, I did add also, all the detail that should be on site plans that we don't require now, the name of the property owner, budding lot, de-restrictions, tax, section, map, and number, applicable zoning district, use regulation, and bulk regulations described by notation, location map, the scale, drawn in equals 2,000, which is usually just a small square in the corner, indicating relations with the lot to all around surrounding land uses. So that, that's a general requirement that would tighten up some of the applications we get. And then using that as the base, the next section is, is shorter, a little bit less rigorous. This is for single and two-family homes.
That's three, right?
Yep.
Yeah, section, subsection three, new one-family, two-family dwellings for expansion. And we've already gotten clear in the first paragraph, they're putting expansion over 50% square footage. So anything less than that doesn't come in as a site plan. So the applications shall be prepared and signed by legally qualified individual or firm, such as a registered architect, professional engineer, and shall contain the following. I've kept in there, registered architect or professional engineer, as a such as, it could be maybe someone else, a landscape architect, for example, some professional, which, which is a burden, but it is for single and two-family homes, they're going through construction, they're gonna have to get building permit, they're gonna have to surveys anyhow. It doesn't seem too burdensome to ask for an engineer's drawing. But anyhow, that's, that's something to talk about. I know some of the site plans for single family homes don't include a fully engineered drawing. So then again, we repeat what I think is necessary for residential, a survey of the lot showing boundaries, et cetera, and the important environmental elements like watercourses, water bodies, and outcrops. Location and size of each proposed building or structure, location and size of all proposed impervious areas. So I'm trying to scoop in here all impervious areas, so first of all, you can determine coverage. And whether it's a driveway or a parking area, it doesn't really matter, if it's impervious, that's what you need to know, if it's impervious, it's not so critical. Now, you, you want to see impervious too, perhaps, but-
I just want to make sure I heard what you said, were you saying that that would be a standard to identify where the driveway is?
Where the impervious surfaces are.
Or really the impervious surface, not necessarily the driveway or parking area.
If it's just gravel, no. Proposed landscaping, which is not now in the, in the rules, but that's an important thing. Location and design of proposed stormwater management facilities, now this, it's only if they're proposed. Most people will not propose anything, but if something is proposed, that should be shown. Location of proposed sidewalks and walkways, if they are proposed. Location of proposed utilities. Architectural drawings of other proposed buildings, including floor plans, elevations, next tiered interiors. I think that's gonna be available to them anyhow, because they're doing building permit. So I don't think that's too burdensome. Location and identification of buildings or sites within 100 feet that are designated by any governmental agency as historic or landmark, is a shorthand way of saying what is now in the law. I forget what it says, under the village system, but-
There's still a provision in section 920 municipal code.
Yeah, but I think it's, generally any governmental agency is designated as historic or landmark, you should note that. And then the same general provision about-
Do we, do we wanna, can I ask on that standard? So if we, should, should, should we call it a, a local landmark for, for another type, and another type of historic resource? Because I wonder if people may be challenged by understanding the other readers of the definition of a historic resource.
They, right. I was thinking of the National Register of Historic Sites, or the State Register, or it could be a local designation, but any one of those.
So you were thinking locally landmark, state or national register?
Right.
But it would have to be designated, right? Because it would have to be officially designated by the county.
Designated, right, not just eligible, but designated. I mean, eligible would be too hard to figure out.
Right.
And then finally, I, I added in the exceptions we've talked about before.
Wait, I can talk for one second?
Yeah.
What if it's in our historic district?
If the building or structure has not been designated that way, then I, I haven't required it. But you know, the general information required is, includes the applicable zoning district. It's not a zoning district, I guess, but-
No, it is.
Is it? Under the-
Yeah, we have it each district, but it doesn't, it doesn't provide any provisions special for us. It simply means that houses within that district, or buildings within that district, for certain things would need to go to the start, local historic condition.
Right, but what are those things?
If they want to paint their house, if they want to put it-
So adding in addition to their house?
Anything that could be seen in the road.
Adding in addition would certainly require them to go-
Yeah, so in, in that case, do we want to include, or in our historic district?
Well, then, what Michael's saying is that it's in the, the zoning district would be the H district, so that's gonna come out of the plan.
Well, what about if it, if it abuts? Does, does that matter, if the next property over?
If it's in a different district, then the visual system applied.
So, I'm sorry, George, I, I missed what you said about that. We don't have to specifically mention if it's in this-
Well, first of all, if it's in the H district, that is the zoning district, and so that is now required to be put on the plan, or, or the map, the plan. But whether you want to say it's adjacent to, anything adjacent to, we could add that in.
I don't think we have to do that if it's not a requirement that I-
I wouldn't, but-
Right.
I mean, you can look at the map, using that.
I, I just wanted to make sure that what, so on, on the site plan, it will say that it's in the historic district, and that's, that's our obligation.
Then that's your information to-
Right, okay.
So-
And who, who is it that refers these things to historic preservation?
Should be the building department.
Right.
Okay.
And I've been helping keep them abreast of cases too.
Okay, sorry, George.
So then the exceptions is, is actually the important escape hatch here, that for minor site development plans, this assumes it's coming to you because it has to, it's an addition of some sort, that's more than 50%. For minor site development plans, or in any other appropriate circumstances, this could be commercial property too. As determined by the planning board, the planning board may waive the provision of any items of information listed in this section. So this does give you the ability, when they come in, either pre-application, or even the first application, and you're looking at it, and you want to do a completeness determination, maybe the building department told them they don't really have to fill this and this out, you could just waive those things. You don't have to do every single thing every time.
Right.
So we didn't fill these elevations or something like that, so I'm not-
Well, it's up to you.
If it's on, I'll take that.
Right. I didn't put topography in, I, I put out props.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, it didn't seem to me that in the village, generally requiring topography made much sense for, for all applications in the village. You can ask for more, and this and the other too. I didn't take that out. In the case of a used conversion, which does not require additional construction for site modification, this could be commercial use. Or in the case of a minor change in existing conditions requiring a building permit, building department may determine that the site plan procedures outlined in this section are not applicable, and may be- not applicable and may be waived. This determination shall be made by the planning board after receipt of a recommendation from the zoning administrator, not likely in the long term.
Yeah.
But it's your proper title, Dave. Village Planner. Village Planner.
So would it be the planner and not the code enforcement?
Well, I was thinking of Dave, but I don't know what the title is. Is there a code enforcement officer?
Yeah. Which is the building inspector.
Oh, well, it's the same thing, it's the building inspector.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
One of the same.
Well, it could be either. So this is the wrong word.
We have to specify something different?
Yeah.
It has to be the name of somebody here, not the name, but the title of somebody here. And finally, the request of the planning board, any other pertinent information may be recently required is necessary. So this is giving you the authority to relieve somebody of extra burden, or to add in some additional requirements.
So if they don't like them, we could just add them.
Yeah, that's more burdensome. Well, okay, so that, that is, that's the way to make this work, lexically, for get the right answer for the right technical.
So can, can you suggest a good change in wording for that last section you mentioned? Zoning administrator, what titles we should use?
So is code enforcement officer the proper term for the, the village?
Title, is that the building inspector?
Building inspector and code enforcement officer.
The code enforcement officer is just somebody who can, in code enforcement, be supervision by a building inspector.
Oh, you're thinking of building code enforcement, or zoning code enforcement?
I'm thinking under terms of civil service.
Oh, well, I'm thinking in terms of how our zoning law is written. And I actually think it'd be better to check.
Generally referred to as the building inspector, is the common term that we use for, for checks.
Brian, why don't we have this conversation about the different titles and the different titles in our code that may make sense for us to actually give you the different titles that are used differently within the code for different reasons. So your office or my title, if you're able to, you refer to somebody similar to the building inspector.
Building inspector. Okay, this is 212-5B-26. The building inspector in village or his or her designee, any reference to building inspector in this chapter shall be gender neutral. Okay. And shall also be deemed to include and refer to the director of code enforcement or code enforcement officer of the county. If no one should hold, or there shall not have been established the position of director of code enforcement, code enforcement officer, then the building inspector shall be deemed to be authorized to act in such capacity. That's capacity as a building inspector, it's not zoning. So you were asking for zoning what, zoning officer?
Well, we don't actually, well, the, the site plan requirement is in 212-23, and that refers to the building inspector. That the application goes to the building inspector and is referred to the planning board by the building inspector, that's...
Yeah, that's what we...
212-23B. So to be consistent, I guess, the term should be building inspector. And then recommendation on waivers then would come from building inspector to the planning board, as you send the application forward. Does that make sense?
You have a prior initial to building inspector and zoning law. Just referring to building inspector, you should suffice my...
Yeah. Well, that's consistent with the way the code is now. So I'm just trying to not create a new term. So this would be another change.
Or planning staff, or planning agency involved, but I know you, you've got sort of this link that you're making, as you said that...
Yeah, since the building inspector is referring the application to the planning board piece, that's the officer who should be making this recommendation. I should have seen that. So that's in that section B. The last page. Do you see another one in there?
No.
I thought there could be code enforcement officer somewhere, but that, that may be elsewhere and is not relevant yet.
We have, let's see if there's law...
I can make that change in the morning, send it back to you.
Okay, well, it would be good. I would love to be able to give this to the clerk tonight. I don't know if the, Tim, can we add this to village board agenda tomorrow to review this? Is that too crazy? It's too crazy?
Yeah, we have a pretty big agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Probably long table to read.
Okay, so...
Probably a table, like...
Right. Okay, so we can move to...
One down. Do you want driveways called out on the standard of floor? The new standard essentially for the residential category?
Well, they're required to be on the survey.
Driveways are required to be on the survey?
Yeah. So item A in both part two and three says a survey, and among the items, it includes driveways.
I missed it there, my bad. I was thinking survey.
They'll be on the site plan, on the survey, because hoping if I was there with the survey. It'll be on the engineered site plan.
So those would be exist, right. So those, that's any existing driveways.
All existing ones, of course.
Right, so if you're proposing a new one, right, then that wouldn't necessarily be there on the survey.
So proposed driveways?
And parking areas, or no?
Well, we care about pervious, right? Call it as the...
So I like the more generic term of using impervious surfaces or impervious areas, and...
It's more inclusive.
It is more inclusive, yes. It's broader, so that it would include anything that's, because I, that's part of our concern. And your argument is if a driveway is gravel, then it's not necessarily impervious.
For a house. This is a single family, two, two-family homes.
A gravel driveway isn't as covered? Oh, because there could be something underneath it, I suppose.
I mean, to me, you would care about this if there's going to be a stormwater issue, running water into the street, or running water onto somebody else's property, but, or maybe a coverage issue. But if somebody's putting a gravel parking area by their home, I don't know why the, why the board should be concerned, is all I'm saying. Things are minor issue.
So I'm not, just so I'm clear, I'm not asking for there be a standard if you're putting a driveway, a minor driveway, as you said, but so are you also, I would just want to ask the board, when you do get, for example, a new addition or a new residence on a lot, do you want to see the proposed circulation and parking on the site within that minor, if I'm to classify it, residential site?
Yeah.
I would say yes.
I would say yes for that.
So proposed, it could go in there as...
You could put under F if you want.
Yeah, I was just going to say, is any proposed driveways, sidewalks, and walkways?
Yeah.
Under F, under 3F, proposed driveways.
How about proposed driveway?
Parking areas.
Yeah.
Parking areas, sidewalks, and walkways.
Anybody have any questions or comments about this document?
I like this very much.
I like it.
Right?
Yeah.
So could we have a motion that, to approve the document to be forwarded to the village board after George's changes are applied?
Salute.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Brian, I send it to you tomorrow morning. I thought it was not in the morning, the afternoon.
Brian, I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome you to, to us and the village and building department. You've had contact with some of us before. Rich Stephens, Michael Zerler, George Rodehouse is our attorney, John Litten is a member. Liz is not here, and you know Ryan. So you came here for, now, your, your civil service title says building inspector two, right?
Yeah, MCO.
And MCO. Municipal, municipal code officer of building inspector two. Right. And in effect, you are supervising other building inspectors, building inspector ones that are here already, right?
Code enforcement officers and building inspectors.
Yes, right. So it's good. And so you came here from, you were at Wapengers recently?
And at Waworsin.
Waworsin, right, right. Not far from, okay. Yeah, it is. And you were also at, I should let you tell, but I'm going to see if my memory will work here. So let's see, Town of Catskill?
Worked with the Town of Catskill.
Town of Rosendale?
Yes.
And there's another one where you were...
Marlleton.
Marlleton, that was a long time ago, right? That was a long time ago, I see.
Yeah, 2007.
So we're happy to have you here. Welcome aboard, you're welcome to any meeting, anytime you want to come. Just don't throw things at us, please. Tim doesn't like that, but, so, okay. So any other...
You've got minutes to approve?
Oh, yes, thank you very much. Very good point, yeah, I remember that now.
So, or do these minutes include your changes?
No.
Okay.
I will tell you what my changes are.
Because I, I'm looking, I got all of this late, and so I was...
Okay, I can tell you that at the very top of the second page, as I have it, it says Mr. Litten moved to extend, I changed that to continue the public hearing. Okay? And I changed the text in the resolution because we made a change to that in the, in the motion to approve this resolution. And the change was, we changed it from an undated sketch, and I changed it to a sketch planned dated May 27, 2015.
Right.
And, let's see, what else did I do here? Okay, on the last paragraph of the pre-application for a steward shop, which is on the last page, it's the fourth paragraph on the last page. What was there was incoherent to me. I changed it to Chairman Whitehead stated that with proper notice, the entire planning board is able and invited to join the quote B3 committee, unquote.
Yeah, I wasn't sure of that, man.
And then I changed the, in the, one paragraph down, where it says Planner Gilmore would ask Consultant White to perform, not preform. And that's, and anyhow, those are my changes. So may I have a motion to approve?
No.
Okay, you have more too?
I have a couple of questions and possible changes.
Yes.
On the first page?
Yes.
Three paragraphs up from the bottom, it says Ms. Brooks explained why the conservation easement is not explicitly noted on the final plot since it is not fully designed yet. I think that should be trail easement.
Wait, he said it's on the first page?
First page, three paragraphs from the bottom.
Two paragraphs.
Three.
Three paragraphs. I see Mr. Zerler moved to open, maybe it's, I imagine a different, okay.
Oh, sorry, so...
Brooks explained why the conservation easement is not explicitly noted on the final plot.
I'm pretty sure that should be trail easement.
Yes, it should.
Because that was the item, it won't get designed until some months from now. And then, in the next paragraph, it says Mr. Rodenhausen requested sections 10 and 14 be reworded, fine. He also requested the existing conservation easements be shown on the final plot. I don't think that's, I don't think you asked for the entire conservation easement to be on the plot. So I'm not sure what that's referring to.
I don't require that, I don't recall making that request.
No, I'm sure you wouldn't.
The request I made was that sections 10 and 14 be reworded, and that's what we're working on.
That's a, that's a 23-page document, I don't think that would be on the plot. So I would suggest just striking that whole sentence.
There, which sentence, that he or the...
He also requested.
He also requested that the existing conservation easements be shown on the final plot.
And I'm just making a note for your clerk to help steward this, we've got a joint public hearing coming up with the...
Yep.
Town board, and presumably the clerks of the town and the village have coordinated their minutes on this joint meeting, so if Brian can just communicate with the town how we've revised our minutes.
Yeah, I mean, if they want to correct that.
Well, they might not have received this.
Yeah.
I have a feeling that there's been coordination given at the same time.
Okay.
Under PB 1512, the pre-application for the new project to construct a steward shop.
Yeah.
There's a, two comments referring to me. The first one, just grammatical, Mr. Zerler stated that while the current zoning code, just strike the word while, since otherwise it's not a sentence.
Right.
I'm just trying to catch up with you.
It's actually not a whole, it's part of sentence.
Did you say that one again, Mike?
PB 1512, third paragraph, including the heading, says Mr. Zerler stated...
That, and strike the word while.
We took the word while out of that. I am making notes on here, I'm marking my document, I'm going to send it to everybody.
In the discussion of the three-month moratorium, again, there's a reference to something I said about notifying business owners. I'm pretty certain that what I said was notifying business owners within that affected district, not all business owners, so we could just insert a phrase, so Mr...
Business owners in the district.
Mr. Zerler suggested noticing the business owners within the district of the moratorium. And that's all I have, thanks.
Okay. Yes.
Can you, I think you made that change on the, from undated to the date of Rich Stephens' resolution, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So that same change was made in the resolution?
Yes, it was. It was, it was made in the minutes.
It was made up here and is made in the resolution down here. I did a sketch appears twice, that's all I'm saying, so...
Right, this, oh, I'm sorry.
You made the change up here.
Okay, I only made it in one place there.
You have to make the change down here.
I think.
I know we went over that at the meeting.
Yeah, we did. Okay, so this is, okay, sketch plan dated May 27. Okay, so this would be in the bottom here.
There says undated.
Yes. We good? Any further comments? They have a motion to accept the minutes as amended? So, John, thank you. Second?
I can't because I was...
Oh, you were.
I had to regroup.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Something to myself.
Aye.
Aye.
Right, thank you. So there are three ayes and one abstain, right?
Yes.
So I think we're done. Thank, you want to make the epipublic?
I would like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Want to go to work?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Is the town exempt from our new B3 regulations?
The town?
We've got to rebuild the town.
No, they're not exempt.
They're not exempt?
No, but we, no, but we have, before you came, some earlier meeting...